Good afternoon and welcome to our one o'clock work session for the Cleveland City Council, today being Monday, July the fourteenth. Thank you all for being here with us today. Our work session will begin with agenda item number one, special presentations and public comments. I don't have any special presentations, but I do have one registered request for public comments from Mr. Jamie Kyle. Mr. Kyle, if you'll identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Yep. Jamie Kyle. I am a resident of Cleveland, Tennessee. I see all the representation from the schools here. All three of my boys have been educated by the Cleveland City school systems. One's getting ready to graduate, so I'm about to be big time in debt with three in college. Part of what I do, my wife and I, is we are heavily involved in what my boys do. And one of the things that they do is swim. And I feel like I have kind of a unique perspective because when I get involved, I kind of get involved. So I joined the board of the Cleveland Aqua Tigers almost six years ago and become president three years ago. And really it was because I had a passion to make things better. I've seen over the years, well, I'll just tell you, I took swimming lessons in the Denning Center when I was four years old. And I think I did advanced swimming lessons at Tinsley Pool when I was six years old. So our pools, in my opinion, are inadequate. Over the years, I've been to several different places, several different cities for swim meets. Been to Kingsport. I've been to Murphysboro. I've been to Dalton, Calhoun. I've been to a lot of places, Knoxville. And I've contributed to their sales tax revenue. And in most cases, I've contributed to their hotel motel tax revenue. And when I go to these places, there's usually thirteen hundred, average thirteen hundred swimmers. I would assume if we just said they brought one parent, we're talking twenty-six hundred people. If they bring two, you can do the math. But they're eating at those restaurants, staying in those hotels, and they're patronizing businesses in those areas. Two programs underneath the Cleveland Aqua Tigers, we have summer swim, and that consists of about a hundred and forty swimmers. That happens at Tinsley. And I want to take this opportunity to say thank you for partnering with us as you guys allow us to use the pool. You make a contribution. Your lifeguards have been spectacular. Really enjoy the relationship we have with Sarah. Sarah makes sure we're taken care of and does a great job. And so wanted to thank you for that. We have another rec program in town called the Water Dogs, and they're a summer rec program as well. Between the two of us, we almost have four hundred swimmers this year in the summer program. The summer program culminates down in Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, for a thing called City Meet. There's over a thousand swimmers at City Meet. It's outside. You set and melt in a tent for two days, waiting for your kid to swim for forty-five seconds at a time for four events. And so both of those days, I went and I had lunch and dinner in Fort Oglethorpe. I think I bought gas in Fort Oglethorpe, probably got a Diet Coke or two. So I contributed to Fort Oglethorpe's economy. When I think about what the City Meet could do if we had an aquatic center here, I think about all the possibilities of all those swimmers and their families coming to an aquatic center in Cleveland, Tennessee. They have told me, as I've talked to the leadership, as Kevin will tell you, as I've been the squeaky wheel for this aquatic center for a long time, that they would come to an indoor facility because when you're down there, as I was this past weekend, we had four lightning delays. Do you know anything about lightning delays? You've got thirty minutes every time there's a crack of thunder. So an indoor facility, they would use. The other program that we have under the Cleveland Aqua Tigers is a year-round program, which is a USA swim program, meaning, and Tony can correct me if I'm wrong, but if a kid were to swim in Cleveland, Tennessee and hit an Olympic trial time, he could go straight and swim for the, or try to make it for the USA team. So you could do that out of Cleveland, Tennessee. There's been kids that I've seen up in Knoxville, get out of the pool and go straight to Olympic trials in Colorado. The Denning Center, as I mentioned, when I was four, I was doing swimming lessons there. If you go underneath the pool at the Denning Center, you'll wonder how it still runs. I have taken many of people down there. I've been down there myself. And it's embarrassing when I took my kid down there to show him what was underneath what he was swimming in. So I come up here to say, I know part of this increase in taxes, possible increase in taxes, may or may not include a, an aquatic center, maybe attached to an athletic facility. If we have the opportunity to do that, I think it would be great for Cleveland. We focus a lot of times on taxpayers. And that's me. That's all of us adults in the room. We forget sometimes that we have future taxpayers that are swimming in Cleveland, Tennessee right now, that are going to come back, like my son, after his first year of college and coach some swimmers in Cleveland, Tennessee. And they're going to be the future taxpayers of Cleveland. We have the opportunity to host several events there. We have the opportunity to make money doing that. I think we just recently did a hotel motel tax. I do represent a couple of hotel owners. And there has been a lot of ask in regards to what can we bring, are having Cleveland that will bring people into town to use our hotels. This is one of those things. I brought two people with me today, Mr. Mayor Brooks, if they could have just a couple of seconds. One being Tony Womack. He is our year-round coach. You notice Tony's in a wheelchair. He's a quadriplegic. He's got a great story and does a great job coaching kids. My kid absolutely loves Tony Womack. And is the reason my kid is swimming is because of Tony Womack. So Tony's going to come up and say a couple of words. And then you may know David Perris's son, Trey Perris, that's what I call him, David Perris's son. But Trey coaches our summer program. Trey has a unique experience because when he was swimming in Cleveland, because of inadequate facilities, he went elsewhere, outside of Cleveland to swim. And to his credit, he's come back and helped coach our summer program. So I'll turn it over to Tony real quick.
Thank you for inviting us and allowing us to speak today. Jamie said it perfectly with the word opportunity. My name's Tony Womack. I coach the USA Swim Club here in Cleveland. And he is exactly right. That is a little, a step above what the summer teams do. The summer teams build the interest. They do a great job in doing that. And then we take a step up with the USA Club and give those kids an opportunity to swim. We are building not only swimmers. We have been lucky enough to send three, the last three years, to college to swim, Jamie's son being one of them. But it also, if you'll look at the statistics, swimming also builds student athletes. Australia did a survey. Most year-round swimmers are twenty months ahead of their peers in education. You can take his son as an example. He graduated high school, not only with his high school degree, but his Cleveland State Associate degree. And he's going on to Piedmont to swim this fall. With this, you're providing an opportunity to grow the leaders of this community. They'll be sitting here one day, nodding our heads and doing things to build the future of Cleveland. It's very, very bright. And not only with this aquatic center, you're also providing a lifelong sport for all of us that can, it can be used for. You can, you know, teach the swim lessons. You can coach the kids. But you can also get the adults in there to swim too, and have them not take a pounding on their knees and their ankles. So we just wanted to take a moment to say, there are huge benefits to having an aquatic center in the community. And it far outweighs any small burden in my brain in the short term. Thank you.
I may have Trey Perris, who just got done coaching our summer program. It usually takes three weeks before he talks to me, but I've got him in here the day after, so.
You got me today. Yeah, like Jamie said, I'm the summer league coach for Cleveland Aqua Tigers. Just kind of talk about the aquatic center and just the importance of that overall. Growing up here, swimming at the Denning Center just wasn't the ideal conditions with just the capacity it could hold, the air quality in the Denning Center, all those type of things. And as a summer league coach, that's the most fun part of swimming is the summertime. And seeing the kids really interested in that, you won't always give them the opportunity to go, send them off to the year-round team where they can go and compete, continue to get better, and fall in love with the sport. We want to be able to give them a better opportunity to do that. The Denning Center, just through the years, has been, it's been really been going under. It's been difficult times over there from what I've seen and just my time growing up there as well. I had to go to Macaulay growing up, just to allow, allow me to get to where I wanted to go in swimming, which was to the college level. And we want to be able to give those kids the same opportunity. Jamie talked a lot about City Meet. And the top team at City Meet right now, they have a pool that they operate out of. So they do the same swim lessons, master's program for older individuals, parties, all that type of stuff. So a lot of different forms of revenue coming in, just from an aquatic center. And those are some things that, just having an aquatic center in Cleveland, huge attraction and things they can bring in for the city.
Thank you, Trey.
Thanks, Trey. And one last thing, we do have Cleveland High School, Cleveland Middle School has a swim team as well. And the depiction of swim that schools like Silverdale, Notre Dame, McMen United, and others see when they come to Cleveland is the Denning Center. And if you've ever been to a high school swim meet, you usually will walk out wet. My kid Peggy Pesterfield all the time because she usually walks out wet because there's only about five feet between you and the pool. There's nowhere to set, and you're standing up. So there's a lot of opportunity. I know when we talk about raising taxes, there's, there's the for, there's the against. And usually people are passionate about it. I'm not here to be passionate. I'm here to present facts that, and just like Tony said, with the education level, with the shape the current pool is in, it's time we do something. I know we've been talking about this, I think, since 2011, maybe earlier than that, and getting a pool. I know you guys took a trip up to, to see what an aquatic center would look like. And I know you came back, from what I hear, pretty excited about that thought. But it's, sometimes you've got to think about other stuff too, and I understand that. I would love for you to think about the future with Cleveland, Tennessee having an aquatic center for our future taxpayers and future leaders of Cleveland. Thank you, guys. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council, from Mr. Kyle? Comments? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Kyle.
Thanks.
And thank you, Coach, both of you. That concludes our registered public comment period. Is there anyone else who would seek to address the council on any topic before we begin the agenda? Please indicate by raising your hand. Yes, ma'am?
As most of you know, my name is Michelle Ghostin. I've been called several times on several issues here concerning the city council. One, the schools. We have a ton of people moving into the Cleveland area. We know that. They have children, not one. Oh, you're so wrong for that. One, maybe two. And guess where they're going? To our public schools. Our public schools are overcrowded. We all know that. Bill, Marcia, Tom, David, Kevin, Dwayne, Ken, and Dan. Our public schools are overcrowded. It's not a crisis yet, but I guarantee, as the population grows, in two to three years, it's going to be a disaster. So the city school board is asking now, Mr. Elliott, I don't know what, oh, there you are. Let's start now. If we don't start now, in a few years, we're going to have a major disaster of nowhere to put these children. And you do not want to put a trailer outside of any of these buildings on our property to say this is where we have to put children. Two, the aquatic center. Where you at? Jamie? Yes, we're at the old YMCA. That thing is older than everybody in this room, including, who's the oldest person in here? I saw you raise your hand, John Kimble. We all swim at the YMCA, the old YMCA. It became the Cleveland City School Aquatics. It's old. It's time for a new upgrade. We've used our city pools during the summer, but when it's cold, they can't do that. And our city pools are crowded. As Mr. Fawkes knows, everyone's in our city pools. And it's hard to shut them down just for aquatic program, but that's what we're doing right now. The cry is here. If you don't listen to the cry now, you'll listen to the panic later. Also, property taxes. Yes. Oh, oh, God, they're raising our property taxes. They're all over Facebook. They're blowing us up. But if you look at an eight and a half percent tax increase, I think we did ten just to cover ourselves. But if you look at that versus renting in town, in the city and the county, fifteen hundred for a one-bedroom. How many people in here can do a fifteen hundred for one bedroom? Two-bedroom is $2,000. That's most and more, more, most mortgages in the city. Why would we look at that? Oh, you're raising my taxes on my property. Yes, but can you go rent for that same amount? The answer would be no. Most of us own our property. I have two, possibly three. But if we don't spend the money now, we'll spend a ton of money later. And then you really would be crying. If it, if it's done in increments, it won't cripple us. Yes, times are hard, budgets are tight, finances are crazy. I know, I know the feeling. I feel it myself. But I'd rather pay eight point five percent now than twenty percent later. So those are my concerns. Those are the phone calls I've been getting. Those are the things I need to address. City, the aquatic center, Jamie, I see him every week. He needs a place to swim. Give him a place to swim. Property tax, it needs to be increased. Schools, if you don't find a place to put these children now, you'll be pulling up trailers on every building in town, and that will be a natural disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else seeking to address the council? Yes, sir. If you'll state your name, please, sir.
Plague condo. Tinsley is, Tinsley Pool is closing in on fifty years. I think it opened in seventy-eight in August. Mr. Tinsley actually ran the pool that first season, and then my father managed it for, I don't know, a dozen years or so. But that's been a long time ago. That's an old pool. That's the newest build. I know Mosby got a refresh. But that's the newest pool in town. And that's, we're just one pump failure away from having a, or a mechanical issue. Any of the pools, closing pools down. They're just, they're in poor shape. The Denning Center, it's, I believe, sixty-five years old. We have close to three hundred kids in the two summer programs. Water Dogs operate out of South Cleveland, and Cleveland Aqua Tigers operate out of Tinsley. And that's current numbers. We could offer more kids, more opportunities if we had facilities, but we're maxed out. Denning Center's four lanes. It's hard to even schedule teams to come in because the pool's so small. You get their A and B swimmer and our A and B swimmer, and you can't have any alternative additional swimmers. And so I know even the middle school program with the school system is, is limited in the number of kids because of space. They can only have a minimum number of kids swimming on the team, not enough to fill out a full roster. They're running a half roster in the middle school program. And it's hard to have those kids continue all the way through. So I'd just like you to take time to consider all those issues. And I know pools are terribly expensive, but it is something that the city this size can easily afford. Other cities our size do have adequate facilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else seeking to speak? I don't see any other hands. That concludes our agenda. Oh, sorry. Yes, sir. If you'll state your name, please, sir.
Jacob Anderson. Good afternoon, Councilman and Lady of the Council. Just wanted to speak on the topic that I think a lot of people are here about, taxes. And kind of, kind of a tricky subject. Nobody really likes them. And of course, who's opposed to education? I don't think anybody can say we're opposed to education. And we've got kids in the school system as well here. I represent three hundred families in the city limits of Cleveland, between me and my partners, that this will directly impact. Even if they don't own a home, you know, landlords can obviously have expenses that can't, that have to either be passed down or absorbed. And this is one that I don't think we can fully absorb, although we have absorbed a lot over the last few years. You know, there are certain things that obviously landlords have to take into account, maintenance, insurance. We can control some of that to a degree. But, and this really is not a tax increase we're proposing. It's a second tax increase. I mean, there's already been a tax increase with the property values that have increased, which we've all seen dramatically increase. So unless you really break down what we're looking at here, we're not talking about a tax increase. We're talking, we already have that. That's established. And we've got new construction that's gone on. Paul Huff has seen a lot of development. What I'd like to see is if somebody has a number of how much in taxes we're bringing in right now versus four years ago. I'd say that number's much higher. And I know there's new people living here, and we have to support the infrastructure. But I just want people to think about, this is not going to affect really even me as much as it will the lower and middle class. Those are the people that inflation hurts and the tax increase hurts. So that's, and a lot of folks weren't even aware of this. And they should have probably paid more attention. And I'm speaking to myself here. So I just found out about this last week. But if you ask folks in Cleveland, you know, are you, are you for better education? Are you for the swimming pool improvements? Everybody wants that. But there's, the timing of this is the issue. It's, it, the tax increases are inevitable. This, the timing of this I don't, I don't agree with. So I just hope people consider that and consider all the facts, not just, you know, the schools, which we all support. And I appreciate everything everybody here does for the council. I know a lot of you guys here. So in the email I sent to them earlier, I said, I hope nobody takes this personal. But this is an issue that affects all of us. And I felt like I needed to at least speak on it. I couldn't complain later. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do need to speak to the, Mr. Anderson, just for a quick second. There would not be a second tax increase. This council is about to be prepared to vote to set the tax rate at the all-time low of 1.2316. So the appraisal value that you're speaking of technically is not a tax increase. In fact, it's against the law for us to raise taxes based on appraisals. So just since that was spoken, Councilman May.
I think what he's talking about, Mayor. If the appraised value is more than forty percent of the last appraisal, then there will be a tax increase, even at the 123.
That's what I was referring to.
Is that what you're referring to?
It's, it's not a tax increase, but it's going to be an increase to what we pay. So in essence, we've already got the increase and we're at that higher percentage. That's correct.
I got so confused a month ago on that because it boggles my mind that you would invest in property and not expect it to be worth more. I didn't even know you were starting from a, from a point that was different than that. So I, well, I, I, I just want to clear up a month ago that now I know where we're starting. I know our baseline. That's all I would say.
It's the second increase. The timing is the issue.
No, no.
The state, the county, North City, has raised your taxes yet.
So are you going to take in more revenue or less revenue than y'all did four years ago?
Percentage-wise, right now.
Percentage-wise in dollars and cents.
That is not our call. It's the market that does that. And if you invest, if I invest, I want a return. You bet I want it to be worth more. You bet. And I'm paying pennies on pennies, not even to the dollar.
So you think the people of District Two, they, they are all in favor of the tax increase?
No. I got a lot of notes.
Okay.
Councilman May?
I'm worried how it's going to work. No.
Councilman May? Reconciled?
But Bill, the point you're making, you know, he's owned the property, but I don't know how long. And he's going to continue to own it. But it means that he's paying more taxes at the rate 123 than he was paying last year.
I'm echoing the mayor in that there has been no taxes. He misspoke.
That's what we disagree.
If I may.
This goes back to a month ago. Why, I couldn't even get on the same page.
The property, the property is owned. We're talking about it. It's on Georgetown. Georgetown's got four lanes wide. Got sidewalks on both sides. The property's worth more money. The assessment, we're worth more money. As you make improvements to what Dr.
I'm not arguing that.
But that's what I'm saying.
It's worth more money.
Yeah.
But the bottom line is, he's paying more taxes than he was paying a year ago at the rate 123.
The improvements that were made. Every time we make improvement, we put a sidewalk down.
I don't have a problem with that. He has a problem with the bottom line. He's paying more taxes. He's paying more taxes.
You said 40% or more. Are those that increase less than 40% paying less taxes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some that's paying less.
Yeah, yeah. About, about 50% of the people pay less and 50% pay more.
I do have to ask, Councilman Moore, did you have a comment?
No. So I would want to buy property that would increase in value and put me in the upper 50%. That's part of business and that's what I expect. I'm going to, I'm going to buy, invest in something and want my, and it to accrue and to improve, yet I want to pay less of a percentage? I, I just couldn't even put my mind around that thinking a month ago.
It doesn't affect me because I'm just going to raise our tenants because they're already lower than market anyway.
Exactly.
Can there be more public comments that he kind of walked over, but I want it, if I can.
Yeah, I didn't see any, I didn't, no, I didn't see any further hands. I will allow it. Mr. Fivus, I'll allow one more.
No, it's, like, I don't want to get in the way of it.
If you'll state your name for the.
My name's Michael Williamson. Most of you know me. I own Clarity Property Management. We manage about roughly $200 million in Brighton County. So I think most of us here are fine with a tax increase, at least me as a property owner. I'm fine with it. I would just like for it to be more gradual, I think. Maybe I feel like we go a long time without raising taxes and then all of a sudden it's like 10 or 15%. It's just a big, it would be nice if we did 2 or 3% a year and you guys projected, you're all very smart. You know, hey, we're going to grow and we're going to, every year there's going to be a little increase because we all want good schools, good aquatic centers, and I want all that too. I think that's kind of some of the struggle is the, the amount. It's, it would be nice just to have a more gradual than a jump. And then I think there's some people who feel like the assessment that a lot of our properties got doubled, which I'm grateful for, thankful for. But to then have them double, we haven't paid the taxes on that new higher value yet. Even if you keep the mill rate the same, you're going to pay more because that value is higher, which is great. But it's not just a little higher, it doubled and some of them more than doubled. So we haven't really baked that into the cake yet of rent, you know, and all our expenses. And then it's like, oh, and on top of that, here's this increase. I think that's just where it hurts a little bit, but it's okay. You know, everybody wants the city to do great. Just, I would ask maybe for just a more steady incline with projections, that's all. Thank you for your time. Thanks for all you do.
All right, we've heard from public comments. Mr. Fivus, city manager report.
Thank you so much. And I think we'll probably recover some of those, those areas. I, I want to go through a couple items before we get into the, the main event. One thing is that tomorrow we have a ribbon cutting at Highway 60 in Georgetown. We were out there then today and they're cleaning up and trying to make that best. So, so essentially that, that project is open and ready for business. That is at 1:30 at Candy's Elementary School. And my, my guess is that the county and the state dignitaries will be there to do that. And the entire council and the communities involved to, to celebrate that, that massive project with us. So that's a, it's, it's been what, three, four years, four years?
Too long.
I've lived it all four years.
But it was under budget and it had a schedule.
Yes, and it's going to make schedule.
I got to say that.
What you're both, those are all good things. The second item is that we had a, an impromptu visit from the TDEC Director for remediation on Friday. The mayor was able to stop in and say hello. And we had a chance to tour the Whirlpool site and get as much information. And, and essentially they have given us a, a letter that, that we will have no liability for any future cleanups or issues like that. So it was a very positive working relationship with, seemed like with, with TDEC. And at the next meeting, if you have questions on that, we'll probably be talking about that a little bit more. That was a, a good step forward on that.
Was this a precursor to signing the contract?
This is, this is about them coming and checking out is that there is what is called a VOAP, which is a.
Let me ask that differently. How far are we from signing the contract and having the date?
Well, there's a, a closing set for the week of July 28th.
Awesome. Thank you. Two weeks. That's great. Two weeks from today.
Yeah. Or, or I guess they actually have hour and date, but everyone, everyone agrees that that's the week that something's going to happen after the council gets to look at everything.
Can I ask that you send us a map of which properties are in that contract exactly? Because I know it's, there's piecemeal and it's just a lot of different discussion I'm getting with questions.
It's convoluted for sure. So the next point, the jet port HVAC system. The jet port is a little over 10 years old, before my time and many of you. Is that that system has been a perpetual problem. It was a, it was a, a system that, it was kind of a, a duckless type system. It was new and it's, it's caused all kinds of problems for us. I mean, I think since we've installed the system about 10 years ago, we've put in excess of a couple hundred thousand dollars in, in maintenance and fixing that. Right now we have a situation where half the system is down and we're having to make that decision. Do we repair the system that we're continually having problems with? Or do we pivot and go in a different direction? So, and I want to bring this up to everyone, make sure that everyone is, is on the same page or can ask questions, is that we are planning to pivot and to gradually install a new system, which would be a split unit system. Right now, this is not a split unit, which has separate units scattered out throughout the building. We would probably do about 50% of the building right now because the other system can run still independently and you can get as much wear out of that as you can. And then we're going to budget to try to do the rest of the 50% and which will, which will, at the end, we'll have a new split unit system. Now, the cost of an entire new system is about $300,000. And that's a, a huge investment. And we're, we're working through how to finance that and how to make that. It could be done in, in phases a little bit and we're, we're looking at all of our options. Right now the most, because we have employees out there and customers that it's about 83 degrees in half the building or 85 degrees in half the building. And the other buildings probably about 74, 75, when it's good. And in real extreme days, it gets worse than that. So we, we will use, the, the council has and the city has an on-call HVAC provider. They are very good and we intend to take their price and have them begin on these, this implementation. I bring it, usually we don't come and talk about HVAC systems, but when it's $300,000, we want to make sure that, that everyone is comfortable with that or if there's any other thoughts or.
Councilman Moore, you have a question?
Yeah, is Keith here? Are you here? Can you just give us overall, okay, about the jet port? Is that all right, Joe?
Well, he, he, he can say whatever he wants, but it's our maintenance people that are actually.
I'm just curious about what's going on. I mean, we haven't had an update since we put in.
Whatever, whatever, whatever you want.
I want.
How's it going, sir? Sorry about that. I was surprised. What can I, what kind of questions?
Just overall, I, I mean, I heard about the fly-ins, the Friday.
Oh, absolutely.
Tell us about what's going on.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. Mr. Fivus, thank you. The, I've been here for a little over seven months now. I just, I feel the airport's doing well. We've had a couple of fly-ins now. The first two, honest to God, were, were a bust. We had rain. The first one, cats and dogs, along with goats and pigs and cows. We got the full brunt of the, of Noah's type weather. And then the second, we had lightning on the field, so we couldn't do that. But the third one, third time was a charm, did really well. We, we, the goal is to integrate the airport into the city and the local, in the local county and really even the region. And much to our name, you know, the Cleveland-Tennessee Regional Jet Port, is to really tie the airport to the community. And thus far, I feel like we've done that. Within the past several months, we've applied for and been approved to accept Defense Logistics Agency cards, which means we can start getting military units to come in. And we've actually seen that. We're seeing, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, we saw an army unit from Fort Campbell come down for a training day. They brought in two Chinooks and that was fuel cells. We had a Navy helicopter come through and they're starting to share with their compatriots, their compadres, that we're open for business. So they're starting to come in. We are starting to get families coming to the airport just to watch airplanes on a daily basis, which is really encouraging. These are young minds that potentially in the future will be going to Cleveland High School. We've, we're, we're working with the Cleveland High School right now to really build, build their aviation program. It's a, it's a robust program. We're, we're trying to establish partnerships within the community. And what's really exciting for closeout for the numbers, last year, prior to my time coming for the 2025 fiscal year, we had a 4% increase in fuel sales over the year prior. Now, as you know, last year we took, the city took over the whole operation of the FBO. Well, this year we've had an 8% increase in fuel sales. So we're growing. And just so that everyone here knows, that's, that's an indicator to the community growing. I, I, I can't give you the numbers of what that looks like, what that translates right now, but usually when you have an airport and it's, and it's showing growth in fuel sales and things like that, the community's growing. And I can tell you from firsthand experience that we do have businesses flying in here to look to do more business. I do know that the city of Chattanooga, the, the mayor said that they're out of room. If, if, if a, if a top-notch company or organization wanted to come into Hamilton County to work or build something, there's no room.
Mayor, may I, I hate to interrupt, but we have a full agenda to talk about and this is something we can talk about later.
Absolutely.
On that part. I guess the question with Mr. Fivus was getting to, does the AC need to be replaced at the airport? Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we, we've got, we've got, in people, everybody has a problem with their buildings with their air conditioner. They go out and they have to pay for new air conditioners. So, I mean, if you've got a building, whatever. So we've got so much going on. I appreciate that. If you could come back and talk to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for what you did, but I didn't want to take you more time.
No problem.
Our presentations.
No problem. Whatever you guys need.
When are the tent hangars going to be under construction?
We're projecting the end of October, September. We're just waiting on federal dollars. Thank you.
Joe, are we talking about redesigning the whole system or replacing the units?
No, it would be a redesign of a completely different type of system. You would go from a dual, there's two separate systems that are duckless in there to having mini splits that will eventually do the entire building. And once we get all the mini splits in, we'll shut down and take out the other one. So we're, you know, we've had in excess of $200,000 of maintenance stuff in the last several, last.
So you're talking about individual units, that if one goes down, it doesn't affect all?
Yeah, in, in the long term, that to, to, if a, if a mini split goes down, it's about $8,000 to, to there. Whereas now, every time that this thing goes down, which happens about every year and a half, what it seems is that it's about $60,000 to replace it. I understand. Any more questions on jet port HVAC? We'll, we'll proceed with that moving forward. All right, moving to the agenda portion. We have certainly want to thank everyone, the audience, for coming today. We're just here to work through some of the proposals and, and have a conversation and dialogue and then have, and I think that Mr. Kimball will agree, is that, that we have to have a certified rate set today, one way or the other. on June 10th, the council discussed and said, and, and on a five-two vote, said, yes, we wanted to discuss up to not exceeding 10 and a half cents. So we may end up with something much less than that. All of those options are on the table and that's what the, the conversation was on that day. So with putting advertisements in, it got kicked to this time. Is on June 24th, the city council passed a balanced budget. Our budget is balanced. This, this conversation is not predicated on, on balancing our budget. And any of the investments will be on capital projects and it won't have any impact on our current projects. Our current projects like Tinsley and some of those things, these conversations will not be used and the funds will not be used for any of those projects. I, I think we already discussed that every four years, you go through a revaluation process in the state of Tennessee. This year we went through that, our, our values, just like all across the country, certainly in Tennessee, we've seen very high escalation of what, what they say the housing values are. And then you do a revaluation and then you balance out whatever the, the, the taxes are. And our, the state gives us a state certified tax rate and that would be $1.2316. So that is the certified rate. You have the ability to exceed that if you choose to at, at this time. The, and I think as we discussed and not to rip open that cut, is what happens is they balance it out. Some people get increases in, in their, in their property taxes. About 50% roughly, depending on the mix, and about 50% will see increases. So increases and decreases, and then it's all averaged out and that's what happens. We don't have anything to do with that process. The county assessor does all the evaluations, the state sets it for us, and then we look at it. And I think this was already established, but the city does not, nor the county, gets any additional revenue from these, this reevaluation process. It's a, it's a net zero sum. So we're, we're in the same position that we were before.
Councilman Estes?
The, the last reassessment. Sean, you may have, you may know more about this than can remember better than I can. We held the tax rate current.
I'm going to go through the history in a minute and then.
Yep, go ahead then. I'm sorry. Thanks.
So, so today, the only thing we can do is we can decide between zero and 10 and a half cent increase. That, that's our charge for the day to, to work through collaboratively. One of the most important things is that I want everyone to know and understand, and I think many people do, is that Cleveland, Tennessee, is if it's not the most efficient, it's probably one of the most efficient-run city organizations in the state. Do we have things that we can do differently? Sure. Do we have things that, that we could tweak? Everyone does. To give you an example is, is if you look at the tax rates, that we're at 1.23 today, before whatever the conversation is today. These are all cities, and these are all the cities in the state of Tennessee that are over 20,000. over 20,000, that have city K through 12 systems. So you have, you have all of them, they're all very similar, they're kind of center cities, they are the hubs for the community, and the average of those nine cities is $1.67. My point is, did you have a question, David?
Councilman May?
Could I ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. The 1.23 that you're showing, and the other tax rates for the other cities, are we sure that these are the new tax rates and not the old tax rates?
We went through, yeah, we went through, and these are, there's several of them that actually went up, that in the research that staff did, is that any of them, that if this is their year, we are predicting that that's what they did. To best of our knowledge, this is the most updated that we have, but it's in the ballpark. So if there was a revaluation, I think, I think Maryville had a revaluation, and then they actually increased their taxes, and I think this captures that. Is that your understanding about the federal? Yep.
So all cities are not reappraised?
They all have, they all have different four-year cycles.
Yeah. So they could be on an off cycle?
They could be on an off cycle. So it could be a revaluation next year. So it's a moving target, right? You know, over time, the next couple of years, that the numbers can go up or down as we go. This is the best information that we have today.
So... Councilman Estes, if you could speak into your microphone?
Snapshot, great information. We've always been given also the details of city and county, which is much darker of those systems.
They certainly are.
Why are we not publishing those?
We can, we can provide those. I didn't...
To my colleagues, combined tax rate, city and county.
In these other?
In these that are up here. Have Joe send us those.
Yeah.
And the combined tax rate, Cleveland Bradley County, is by far the lowest.
That's interesting.
Not, not just by little, by much darker than what you see.
Because, because the county's tax rate now is like 96 cents?
99.
99. I apologize to the county. So, so there, and we can provide that. I didn't want to mix too many oranges and apples.
The number doesn't matter. It's comparison formation. It's relative.
So, so, so my point in that is not, is not to get into the conversation of there. I think it's the part of the pride of what we do and how we operate in the city of Cleveland. There is no question in my mind that if we don't have the best police department in the state, that we're right up there, and many of the other police chiefs would be that. You know, Mark's the president of the police chiefs, we're highly regarded in what we do and what we provide. Fire department is in the top couple percent. I probably think that there's probably no department that operates better than them. So you're talking about, you have bottom-of-the-barrel resources, but we provide great services. Public works, there is not a public works department in this state, and I can guarantee you that can do the quality of capital improvements and work, pick up everything that needs to be done, and take care of it with what, with what the resources that they have. I mean, it's simply unheard of, of being able to pick up every week, every single item of trash in front of anyone's homes is unheard of. But we do it very effectively.
Joe, can I ask, get back just real quick for the fire department? We've got an ISO rating of two, which saved our citizens quite a bit of money. I mean, a couple hundred dollars on my fire insurance, and that's with the resources we have currently. We're always trying to look and save on that part, too, Mayor. So, I mean, we were like four or five when we got down to two. And we're one of, we're one of, and David, you can speak to this.
He was a three.
A three, okay. Wait, two. And we're one of, you can speak to this. How many, how many cities have an ISO two rating?
Not very many.
Yeah.
So, so, and I'm doing this to celebrate while we're here. I'm not, I'm not engaging in whether, this chart is not meant to be whether you should say yes or no. The chart is to celebrate all of the great work that we do on a daily basis. Our finance department, you know, all of our, most of our taxes are, you know, we're all fixed interest. We have 97% now, fixed interest debt. The level of service at the finance department, our building inspectors, our, you know, our fantastic, all of our staff does a fabulous job. Our park system, we had some issues with our park system, okay? But the council's invested, and we've brought up almost every park to, I don't know of any community that has some better parks than what we do. So I think we should, so at a rock-bottom rate, we show very, very high level of service. We show a very high level of investment. One of the things that that creates, as many of you that are in the business world, the leaner you run an organization means you have less volatility for reacting to the market, is if you're running so lean, you know, other, other local departments, you know, we have three people in our each department. I think most of communities our size would have six or seven. Same thing with our finance department. You would find that they would have four or five accountants. We have two. That's how we do that, is that we are, we are lean, our people work well, and we're very proud of that. So, so I just think that the council deserves a lot of credit for having the most efficient local government in Tennessee, and, and I think we should all be very proud of that. Looking at my experience in recent taxes, in 2016, when I came, that we had, we had issues that we had to address. We had had already started the bids for a fire station that wasn't necessarily funded, plus the 12 employees. We had a police study that had not been implemented. We had, you know, streets were behind, we were building an elementary school that may or may not have been fully funded. So, so we, we had a conversation as a council, and we arrived at doing, and I think Michael Williamson's comments were dead-on. Because we were playing catch-up, we had to do like 42 cents at that time to, to catch up with the things that we needed to do. That particular investment, we, we put 12 or 15 firefighters, or police officers out there, we put 12 firemen out there, we put, we invested in parks, we, 3 cents, I think, was invested in paving. We invested, some of the work done in Johnston Park was one of the things that came out of that for downtown investment. Lot of those things, Deer Park, came out of that investment, and those were all very positive. If you look at the police safety, crime safety, I would say, because of that investment that the council made in 2018, our crime levels are, have been dropping significantly, and we can certainly show you the data over the last several years, right, Chief? In, in most areas. And that's because we made the investment, and we made those decisions to have, you know, cameras and, you know, have criminal intelligence operators and working. Now, I would say, because of those investments, that, that I think, I think the criminals are afraid to come to Cleveland. I mean, that's what the police said, is they go, they work around us because they know that we're watching. And I think that we should be very proud of that, and keeps our families and everyone Point being is, we did, we did, we did it huge. That's not the way we should run local governments, is having massive tax increases every few years. I mean, Michael Williamson is completely right, is that what this is about, is our budget right now, we have a, we have a, we have a balanced budget, we do have some headwinds in the future, but we have a balanced budget, and, and so we're fine. But what this conversation is, how do we keep the momentum to go and have small investments at a very strategic way? And I think that that was, was one of the things that we really wanted to accomplish and, and have the conversation. And if we're not ready for those investments, we're not ready for those investments. And then we'll, we'll figure out what, what we need to do next. I think that, and the history is, I found this interesting, in 2013, pass that out, the city council had a certified tax rate of 1.51, or 1.58, and the council set a new tax rate in 2013 at $1.76. And this piece of paper that you're getting, they talk about colas for library, or colas for employees, hiring new people, public works, equipment, all kinds of things. What we're doing here is very consistent with what we've always done. Every five or six years, we have to readjust and we have to make investments. 2005, obviously, through the Great Recession, we probably held off because that was a horrible time. That's why 2013 and 17, is that we're making up for some of that time. What we're doing, so you went through COVID, and what we're doing is, you know, we weathered COVID very well because we are lean and efficient. And, and, and so we're just taking the next reiteration is, you know, you know, the county even raised taxes in 2019 and '20 by 11%. And so in Bradley and Cleveland County, since 2005, there's been, I think, five, if you count this one, five considerations of increasing taxes. No one wants to do it. But I think, as we've heard, is sometimes, just like any person that owns a business in here, that sometimes you have to make investments. Are these the right investments for right now? Is this the right time? Fortunate for you, you're the ones that get to make that determination, and that's really what, what we're talking about. So, so back to Dr. Estes's question, and is this now?
Got it. You hit it.
Is 2005 tax increase, Great Recession, eight through 11, coming out of that, we had an adjustment of 18 and a half cents, same type of things we had now. 2017, we had the same adjustments for doing the same. We're right in the middle of the last, of the last time we did an appraisal, it was right in the middle of COVID. Of course, we weren't going to make any adjustments. And so now, we're coming out of that. So every time we've, we've done this, it's been in a reappraisal year. And that goes back to thinking, because some people get a decrease, some people get an increase, and it's just a kind of, that's, that's, that's not me, that's, that's just the, that's what people have done in the past. It's the way it's been done. So, you know, the snapshot of our funding position is, well, since the last time we've, we evaluated this, what has changed? Well, you know, we have, you know, we've done everything right financially. We're much healthier than, than what we were before. But our, but I can tell you, our labor costs have gone up. I mean, if you go through, and we've all been through that, you know, I think we're looking at our, for, we used to, for a starting police officer, when I came, we started them about $36,000. Now they're probably going to be in the neighborhood of $50,000 at New Comp City. So each of those costs, and then each employee that goes, there's a lot that we've tried to push in our budget. Same thing with firefighters. Same thing with every single position that we've looked at, is, and we absorb those, we try to do the best with the taxpayer dollars, try to be as fair as we can to our employees. Material costs have gone up. We, one item we're going to talk about are the tires, are the tires. The paving, that the paving has gone up 40%. We're doing 40% less paving. Is that a, you know, if people are okay with that, and that works for the community, then that's good. If people have paving needs, then we need to address them. So, you know, we just went through and made about $139 million in infrastructure investments in Cleveland in the last three and a half years or so, and we still finish in this year.
And Joe, can, it's important, why did we didn't raise after COVID? All of that, much, most of that's federal dollars that were COVID standards.
But it goes, it goes, but it goes to the efficiency. Almost every project that we do, we throw federal and state dollars in there. So we spent $139 million, we probably spent 20 something.
Yeah. But my point is, we were very fortunate after COVID to have a federal windfall, and we used it incredibly well, and are still using it.
Yep. So we do face headwinds financially. This growth will catch up to us. My message today is, is today the day? I don't know. That's for you guys to figure out. The message is, we, if we stick with your path and continue, as Michael Williamson said, is just to do small increments. Maybe it's not 10 and a half. Maybe it's something smaller. But let's just keep making critical, good decisions, as we always have been, and, and make sure we walk away with, with, with moving forward.
Joe, did you land on 10 and a half was exactly 25% of 42 cents our last?
No.
Or is that just?
That's just luck. So, I think that I've teed it up. That's really just supposed to be a history of what has happened, and kind of where we're at, and how it works. And now, if it's up to you, Mr. Mayor, that you can kind of go through the individual projects and do that. Does anyone have any questions on the history, or how we got here, or why we're here?
Why are you going through projects?
Review the three-club agenda.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So, so, so the first project, forgot my little thing. Again, we don't have to agree on this. We're putting ideas in front of people. Whatever the council decides, if you want to pare it down, that's, that's why we're here, that's what the council said on June 10th. That's why we're here, is to have the conversation, to see what has support and what does not have support. The paving, as I've already talked about, is currently, since 2017, we've invested $1.3 million in paving. And at that point, that was going to bring us up to a standard about paving every road in the city about every 20 years. Since that time, with new, with new bidding out the contracts, with other, and it was just mostly the bidding out, is our cost for our main paving material has gone up by about 40% since what we had in, before this time. So as we said, about, we are, we are paving 40% less roads every year. The problem from, as you guys, as, as the policy setters, is if you do this for three or four more years, that means you're going to fall behind by two or three years. And then you get into the place that Michael Williamson said, is then you have to do something big to really catch up. So we're just having the conversation, let's, let's chip away at that and do something that, that makes sense. And, you know, we, we've done this because the two cents catches it up to the 40%. For, if you have a home that's, that's $300,000, that this would be $1.25 per month. And we'll go through each of those. So with that, does anyone have any questions on the paving portion, for me, anybody, staff, about where, where we are from a paving standpoint?
Any questions from the council, from Mr. Pivvis?
Joe, I know we have to get our paving cycles down lower because of what we have in the city. The road's being used more from the county, and the county has a little, you know, suburbs, they don't wear as much. It's just like you put a pair of socks on, you wear them every day, they're not going to last as long. So, but we have to continuously make sure we maintain our roads. If we don't get our cycles down, we're going, we're going to have problems. We're going to have potholes. We're going to be, it's going to be like Paul.
Well, we already have, we already have potholes.
I know. Accident drives the same. And accident drives the same way. I mean, it's just, and we talk about Mouse Creek, talk about Michigan Avenue, you know, those are the things that we're going to fall behind.
So here's a couple of kickers that really, that make me stay awake at night. Yeah, we're losing ground, but we have free will, we have peerless. Doing each of those roads will eat up our entire budget for that entire year. So you will do one road in one of these couple of years for that. So that just makes you fall further behind. And those are the things that, and on top of that, you know, it's no secret, we've probably added several neighborhoods in the last 10 years. Those new roads are expiration periods usually about 20 years. So you have a lot of neighborhoods all approved at once. You're going to have a lot to deal with about 10 years from now. Not our problem today, but I would rather catch up and be in a good spot when that ticking time bomb hits us about 10 years from now. I'm done with paving.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Joe, do we have any idea on what the pothole and repairs cost us?
Tommy, do you know that? Pothole, what are the pothole and repairs? How much does that cost us?
Councilwoman and Councilman Estes, I'm going to ask if you guys could pull your mics because they're not able to hear.
He said about $80 a ton for every time they go and do that?
Every time they go and do that.
But it depends how big the pothole is.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, do we know what it costs us yearly to do potholes, to fix potholes? Do we have any idea? I mean, you're talking about this or a month? Do we know?
I think the question is, how much do we spend in buying asphalt to pay for potholes? Just a general number. We may have to look at it. We'll get you, we'll get you a number.
Because I'm just trying to figure out, are we, you know, are we like already spending this amount or close to it? Already just fixing where if we did this, then we wouldn't be spending that or wasting that. It would be done here. This is what I'm trying to figure out.
Of what the new money would be paid for?
Yeah, are we spending almost $1.25 per month now doing just repairs?
The $1.25 is 10 cents increase on a $300,000 home.
I get that.
This is a budget item.
I get that. But what I want to know is, how much are we spending on repairs versus what we wouldn't have to spend if we didn't have the repairs? What do we say?
We'll get you a number. Tommy, can you give me the number? What is the number that we just buy asphalt every year that's not tally?
You're talking about a year of comp?
Yeah.
I'll get it.
Yeah, we'll get it for you. Any more questions? Mouse Creek widening, that's a question that's come up quite often. This item, and I'll go through each of these and I'll try to speed up. We're talking to do Mouse Creek Road on a pay-as-you-go standpoint. We would pipe a lot of those areas where there are fallen ditches. We would widen the road in each direction a couple of feet, just giving it another, it would just make it feel a lot better. We'll put turn lanes in several of the neighborhoods, some of the busy neighborhoods. And essentially, take this off our list as far as concerns and questions out there. It is a safety issue. There are safety issues on Mouse Creek, as you know. Again, 41 cents per month. If you have a house that's $300,000. If you said yes to this one item, it would be 41 cents a month. Any questions on that? Same thing with Free Will Road, and I'm just trying to get to the point here. Free Will Road, are there any questions? Same analysis, same process, same cost, 41 cents a month just to widen out that road?
So I don't think that math is right. If it's a buck 25 a month and one penny is equal to 12 and a half cents a month. And if that's less than a penny, it's much cheaper.
I'm not following.
$300,000 home, you say it's $1.25 a month is a 10 cent increase. So how much would that be for a penny a month? Not 10 cents a month, a penny a month, that's 12 cents per penny.
$1.25 a month is two pennies.
Okay, rounded up, let's say two pennies. How much does that cost? Two-thirds of a thousandth of a penny. So it's not 41 cents a month on a $300,000, $300,000 home.
Yeah, it's like a third of the two pennies.
Yeah, it's a third of two pennies. It's not 41 cents a month on a home. It might be, it's way too much.
We'll show you the mayor.
Yeah, I think it's right.
Got a lot less.
No, I think that's right.
You think it's right or?
I think they're normally right.
So somebody's numbers are wrong, come on. Let's do this, this is too important to say, oh, you're wrong.
So for, my numbers are for 10 and a half, if you do 10 and a half cents, it would be $6.13 a month.
Six, not a dollar 20, I heard a dollar 25.
Oh, I'm sorry. And, okay. For just paving?
This was pre to the background. This came, I heard this from the background, not from the paving.
Just the paving is $1.25. For $10.05,
I'm with you now.
It's $6.13.
What helps me is so 613, that tells me it's 60 cents a penny. Right?
Roughly.
Yeah, 60 cents a penny, so it'd be 40 cents at two-thirds of a penny.
Yeah, I think it's 61.
61 cents, okay, so that's easier for me to work off of.
Okay.
So during this math break, if you don't mind, educators are all checking our math. Mr. Campbell, I have a legal question for you. I've been asked by a member of the council about it now being 2:15. Doesn't look like we're going to make the 3 o'clock published meeting time. If we made, if there was a motion made to extend the 3 o'clock meeting to begin at 4?
What you do is, is you,
You just?
Turn this meeting, restart your next meeting, and then you go back into your work section. That's way longer.
I'll get to the board.
I've never had to do that before. I'm the new mayor. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
So we'll get through it. So you're talking widening Michigan Avenue, 41 cents. The construction of the multi-sports complex, which is the soccer field complex, which would, I have a big picture over there that I don't want to walk across the room to get, and everyone has seen it. Essentially, this was on Mouse Creek Road. And Sean can hold it up. Is essentially to turf and our sports tourism study that we looked at is that we would be able to turf those fields, create additional parking, and have a state-of-the-art facility. And why do that? It's because of, if you go and you read this, and the council has an item that you can read, basically you're talking 707 football, lacrosse, soccer, Cleveland, Greater Cleveland Soccer Association has well over 1,000 people that are playing soccer every year. Right now, there is no open space on the field. They basically run it until the sod comes out. We think that having turf out there is a better alternative because you can have 24-hour play. And, you know, the numbers that are also on here, with this and the other facility, we would gain about $1.4 million a year in new revenue to the city in sales tax and hotel motel tax. And it would create 68,000 new hotels. And this isn't me, this is our study from a third party. 68,000 new hotel rooms. And it would create about $41 million in new revenue for our small businesses in our community. This is, but we're also a community that our population will increase from 50,000 now to about 85,000 in 2045, which is what our studies say. We will just need these fields just to, just to keep the, just to, just to keep people playing. So we'll need that many fields in the future for just our own kids, let alone sports tours. Any questions on that? We've talked about that and been over that.
Vice Mayor?
I would just add that that couples with the Mouse Creek Road improvements.
It does. I probably wouldn't recommend that without doing something on Mouse Creek. You know, so you would need to have the six to the point and zero, 0.66 included in that if you were just going to do that. So you have that. This would be mostly pay-as-you-go. There's a schedule that over seven years, we would, we would get the money, we would buy turf. Kind of have a schedule on how to build that out. And that would be, over time, we're not necessarily in a hurry. There are options that if you wanted to take your penny and a half and bond for that, you could all do it at once, but that would be additional debt. I don't know if we need to take debt out for that because we still have fields out there that are functioning. Any questions on that? Indoor events and aquatic center, which we'd had some public comments on. Basically, you know, we have a study that have looked at this. This facility would be part of those numbers that would bring in the 68,000 room nights. Essentially, what it does is it would be an aquatic center. So it would have full-service aquatics, potentially the fun stuff. Attached to an event center in one formation, and this is what, this is what the third-party professionals came and told us, you would have about a 4,500-seat arena, which you could play, you can do wrestling, you can do basketball, you could do just about anything. You could have it set up in a concert venue to have bluegrass or whatever type of music that you would want to have. You could set it up for some type of church-type event. You can have it for a trade center facility. But then you can also have it just for sports. You have eight basketball fields, 16 volleyball fields. And it would be a powerhouse as far as bringing in those facilities. Now, the numbers that we show, this is, this is less than a penny. This is 0.5% a penny. How can we do it that, how does those numbers work out? Is that this would be paired with a, with a current development that is being, is being highly considered and we think that it's, has a huge opportunity to be completed. Is that we would put a tax increment finance district and we would use some of those tax revenues off that to help pay down the bond debt. And we have hotel motel tax that we would allocate to this to be able to do that. We have a funding model that we think is pretty strong with the county's participation. The question that I've gotten is, well, you know, there's still information that we know, yes. So we'd be saying, if, just like any project, whether it was Whirlpool, whether it was paving of Paul Huff Parkway, which is just amazing, thank you for doing that, is any of those projects that we start, we don't necessarily have a full business plan when we start. If the council, when the council says yes to go on this, we will hire our consultants and they will put together a business plan. They will work with all the partners to figure out how it's going to be done, where it's going to be done. We've had land that will be donated for this facility. And we would start putting all those plans together and the city council would see all of those developments and improve that. Are we going to run into tough questions? Undoubtedly, we do on any project. But as far as the funding that you have, it's 31 cents per month, is that basically you'll be doing a business plan, you'll start doing, you'll put together all the documents that you can bring to the council to say, this is what it is, this is how it's going to be built, and all of those items. Just like any business when they bring a new item online is you have to invest upfront. So there's still a lot of work to go. I think, I think, I think the, at the end, when you have, you know, 68,000 hotel nights, 1.4 million new dollars and $41 million for our small businesses, I think that it's pretty helpful. Now, the aquatics, we had heard some on the aquatics, but this can use for 50 different sports. Cheerleading, basketball, volleyball, you go through. The key thing is, and I talked the other day, is I built a similar facility in my former community here. It was a public-private partnership. We could look at public-private partnerships. The one thing, and we did an outdoor and an indoor. The one thing that the most people, that I got the most praise at the grocery stores was, is all the people here, if I, people raised their hands, who's involved in sports tourism with their kids, families going to a thing? A lot of people, yes, a lot of heads nodding. Those people travel every weekend and spend $1,000. The best thing you can do for your residents is give them that they can get the best competition in the country, AAU tournaments, whether it's volleyball or whatever it is, is they can get it right here in Cleveland and they don't have to travel. That was the biggest thing that people appreciated is you're putting money in their pockets for not doing that. You know, there's enough users. Having this facility allows Bradley, Walker Valley, Cleveland to all have swimming facilities, swim teams, you imagine the competition. There's all kinds of business options. There will probably be hotels that go next to this. We can charge the hotels for the use of this at a very high rate. At the end of the day, in my last comment on this, our goal when we sit from a strategic standpoint is, we want the people in Nashville, we want the people in Atlanta, we want them to pay for our facility. That's just what will happen. We would have a third party come in. I would rather people from out of town pay for our facility than having our taxpayers have to do that. Any questions on this? We've talked about it enough. Again, 30, to get this rolling, 31 cents a month for any home, that's $300,000. With this, I will turn it over with your approval, Mayor, to Jeff. And if you want to talk a little bit about the school's presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, I just wanted to give an update and highlights about our discussions about schools as we've had this past year. And appreciate the opportunity over the last year to work with you and with our school board and our school system and looking ahead at what's to come. Today, I come and we've had an opportunity to take a look a lot at the growth that's going on. We've been here and heard that throughout the year. We've also seen in our schools capacity in some of our elementary schools, as we've mentioned and shared with you, our middle school as well. And we provided those numbers for you. One of the things that we understand is that as we've come to meet with you, we realize the economic developments that you guys are facing and the 2032 debt relief that you're looking at. And so our board circled back up and we looked and we've planned according to the growth that we're seeing in Cleveland, projecting out, and the urgency that we're seeing at some of our schools, such as at the high school, as we've mentioned earlier, infrastructure. infrastructure in the future that will be occurring. And we have some concerns at the West Wing, which is the old junior high school. And so we have, uh, looked at that. We've also, uh, looked at the capacity needs at the elementary school and at the middle school. With that, and knowing that we need to have a plan in place, we have a plan in place. We have elementary schools who, where we see capacity changing in tight spots, especially over at Bower, Arnold, Mayfield and other elementary schools there that we've mentioned already. With the capacity that we have, also this year is our year, was our year as our school board, to adopt a five-year strategic plan. So for 2025 to 2030, one of the big components of that strategic plan that we had just adopted just a month and a half ago, moving forward, is to look at ways that we can bring pre-K into our schools. We have pre-K programs that are, we, we find that they are off campus right now. We don't have room right now for our pre-K classes to be on campus. We want them in our buildings. But we also want to explore, and we are going to do, ways to expand that. We hear from our families that are in our schools and we hear from families, and you do too, I'm sure, about ways that we can provide that quality education early on and provide that in a community school. And we've, we've shared that with you about the community school. So we see a goal of, uh, we're looking at, currently we have 120 students off campus for pre-K programs. If we double that and get those two classrooms in every elementary school, that's 240 students right there. We have capacity needs, obviously, at our schools. Plus, we are also looking at the elementary level of growth that we know and we've heard you guys and we've seen it approved. And, and we anticipate more to come, uh, in our city as far as additional housing, which is gonna produce more families, which will produce more students, which is a good thing for us. We would love to have them in our buildings. So our first priority was, is considering all that and the financial situation we're looking at here is elementary schools, out of the elementary and secondary level schools, we know that is the most economical approach to put as first priority, based off of the needs that we are facing, the growth that we are facing and where we are and where you guys are in the financial world. We've always said the high school is another piece where we're gonna have to look at and we have phased that out into our plan. Around 2030, the clock is ticking. I remember in our COVID and talking about Esser dollars and some of the things that we did over summer, we went in and did some infrastructure work that individuals told us it would help us out for 10 years. That would get us for about 10 years. Well, 2030 is where we are on that. So we put in a phased-in approach. There's three phases at the high school level that we're talking about. First phase, obviously, would be to alleviate and, and get students out of that West Wing where this issue is occurring. We would propose to build an additional CTE building. Many of our CTE programs are on that West Wing. We have our health sciences, culinary arts and those programs over there. We would move those over to a new facility. And then the next phase would be to build an academic wing where that West Wing is. And final part of that phase as we go, and the vision for that is that we would see a need to, a performing arts center. We'd love to partner with the city. I've seen, and you've probably have too, where school systems and cities partner for the performing arts and provide a, a nice arts center and theater, uh, on our campus at Cleveland would be an ideal piece. The vision for the middle school, we've talked about that. I've had that question this year come up. And, and, uh, I know that that's a, a big concern too. Middle school is near and dear to my heart. I served as a principal there for several years. I actually served as the assistant principal when we transitioned sixth grade to the middle school. That was my charge at the time was how do you transition sixth grade in? And we, we did a great job with that. Proud of our middle school. So in the meantime, we are prepared as a school system. We know that, again, where you guys are. In the next few years, we've got to address overcrowding there, so we're gonna have to work together. I'm here today to say that we're in a good spot financially as a school district, a good fund balance. And we're here that we can hopefully work together as looking at ways to do additions to Cleveland Middle School, very similar to what we picked up the cost on Candies Creek Cherokee. We paid for those additions and we're able to do that. And so that puts together then, as time goes and that debt relief comes for the city. Very well possibility, we have to explore the opportunity for an, an additional middle school in the city of Cleveland. The excitement of the growth could lead to that. But today, we're here because we're focused on what we have shared the immediate need. And that is elementary schools. And beginning with to provide that relief for future growth that we anticipate over the next few years. We know it takes three to four years to get a school built. We need to identify the property. We need to work with our board and the ad hoc committee that we have formed on architect, the renderings to bring to you guys, and then get started on building an elementary school and elementary schools. And so that's where we are today. That is the need that we have. But it's urgent that we get started. We have students and, and here's the situation. We have students in these schools at the elementary level that are over capacity. They are actually sharing classrooms with more than one teacher in some of these classrooms. Language development classes, intervention classes, shared spaces in large classrooms. We need to give them the opportunity to have their own classroom, their own space. But we also want to be prepared for the growth that's coming and be ready for the future.
Thank you, Dr. Elliott. Any questions or comments from the council for Dr. Elliott? Sing non, thank you. Mr. Fivus? Would you like to continue with the fire station? Item H. As in hot.
This item, it would be a half a penny for a new fire station. Uh, we have a, a location that has been asked to, uh, or that has said that they would donate us a, a location if, if that location, um, works for the council and the fire department. That point, that point five, it would be about 31 cents per month for that. It would probably be a few years before you would do that. You know, we, as we press and we, we add to our borders, that puts pressure on the response times for our fire department. Our fire stations, we've talked about this a lot about with, uh, the fire, um, department and their staff, is our stations are centered for 2011, when we had a contract with the county to provide fringe coverage of, of the, of a lot of, a lot of areas in the county. So when we build our former stations, we thought our areas were much longer. So our, our, our locations are out of kilter a little bit and sometimes don't jive exactly with where our growth is. And, and that does cause some, some response issues. So adding a new fire department, a new fire station would be, uh, important as far as, um, making sure we have something that's, uh, located in the right place. Any questions on, on that proposal? And, and there would be, again, this is like, a lot of the items is if it's approved, we would begin the planning and development, where it would be, how it, you know, what, what it would look like, what locations and a lot of those others.
I don't see anybody requesting, but it would be, uh, if it's not out of order. Chief Bates, I did receive a text this morning from the property owner where the fire was and he was commending the mutual aid response from both departments and specifically mentioned CFD and your cooperation with helping that. And his exact words were excellent work. So on behalf of all of us, thanks for your hard work today and every day. Thank you. I don't see any comments or questions, Mr. Fivus?
Fire, fire station needed? Moving on.
Real quick on the fire stations, is there any of them outdated? I mean, they're, they're, they're really gotta be brought up. We're gonna spend some money on it at some point in time in the future, Chief.
Yeah, um, several of those are starting to age. Rehabbing, potentially some, you know, building a new station and starting to help and helping our families.
Would it be possible if, if it came about where the new station came in, it would cover that station possibly wherever it may be? Where those, those fires could be moved into the other station at that time?
I think our city manager said it best when he said it in the right location.
Yeah, okay. I'm just saying if it is in the location where it can be transferred, it, it's, it's possible. And I'm not saying it's gonna do it, but it's possible.
Yeah, with, with that, with that piece on the table, it allows for a very collaborative conversation to, um, to work on those issues. And, and, and that, that's what would start and we would, we would work towards what, what, what's the best for us now and what's the best for us 20 years from now. To the best of our knowledge until it all changes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right. This one is that there was a proposal. We've talked about the county. There was a, an effort to, um, add on to the current homeless shelter, um, located on Wildwood. Uh, we decided not to go in that direction because the bid prices were high. There's, we've had five or six different conversations on that. We, the council has hired a consultant to help with coming up with the, with, uh, where we need to go. Um, a lot of this would be essentially a new family, would be family-oriented, traditional housing. It'd be one penny or 31 cents. Essentially, we have, we have families. When someone, when someone has some type of personal crisis and we need to put them in a home, is they have to go into the, the same homeless shelter as your general homeless population. Essentially, this could help separate those populations a little bit and, and could open up a little bit more room to have more family-friendly with children and some of those issues. And again, we've, we've hired a consultant. They're helping us with that. Um, the county has some money that they've allocated towards this and, and we've looked at, at, at doing that. I, I, I don't know if anyone else, I think, uh, um, the Cleveland Bradley, um, service organization, um, currently runs our homeless shelter and I don't know if Demetrius or, or is here. He was, he was here, I think, earlier. Is, um, I don't know if anyone else wants to talk on this point that has more information? Or are there any questions on, on this particular issue? We do have, uh, a million dollars that has been allocated already to this project, plus we have some county money. So we're not far away from having, um, yes.
I think Ms. Corinne Freeman from the caring place.
Oh, oh, Corinne's here. You snuck right in. I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, so I'll try to be very brief because I know you guys are on a time trench. So, um, as you are probably aware, we've had multiple conversations, um, housing is at a deficit. So, um, the reality is that it's not so much a homelessness problem as it is a housing problem. Um, there's just not enough housing for the number of families in the state of Tennessee and in, that includes Bradley County. So this would be a resource, not a solution to that. I want to be very clear on that. Um, this would be a resource so that we can help families to have a safe place, so that we can help individuals who may be finding themselves, um, experiencing homelessness, that they could be able to be sheltered or housed for a brief period of time while we gather up additional resources to help them move forward along a continuum of care. We're putting a lot of focus in the design and plan of this, um, along with the consultant firm who's been an excellent choice in that, uh, to really look at economic upward mobility for those families. So, um, it is not enough to simply temporarily house a family. We really want to make sure that when they leave that, um, these units, that they'll be able to move on to stability. So this plan is a collaborative plan. Um, we are including information. Demetrius's agency will be in charge of that and they will do an excellent job in managing it. Um, but we are working with them through the caring place as well as, uh, the housing coalition to kind of get input and data on that. So that it will be a, um, if, as invested, that it will be something that will benefit and serve the community. And I think to truly help move the needle on, um, our housing issue. Basically helps to give a solution while, um, in the current to kind of give opportunity for those families while we continue to work on a long-term solution for the root causes of housing.
Any questions for Ms. Freeman, Vice Mayor?
Would this work in conjunction with Family Promise?
It would. So currently, Family Promise can only house one family at a time. And their program is a true transitional program, so it takes about six months to house, three, six months to house that family. Um, so similar to what we do now, there would be a collaborative, um, kind of system that we move families into the most appropriate, um, program for them and for their needs. And I will just add to that point, we have two rooms for families, two. There's one at the shelter and there's Family Promise. So if we have a family come to us at the caring place with children, then we do everything we can with our church partners to make sure we find them a shelter, but the city has two.
Councilwoman McKenzie, did you have?
Is this separate from what we were discussing about between a new shelter? This is family, is that?
It's, it is the same. So this, the focus is on expanding family, so that's why this is kind of the name is more, is to increase those rooms. But it will include.
So you're gonna house both?
The both, yeah, but the design, yeah, but the design will allow for safe access for both.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Mr. Fivus?
Any questions for me on this? Last item, uh, construction of an animal shelter. Our, our, the city has an animal shelter that's probably 30 to 40 years old. Um, it's, it's starting to show its age. We have some, uh, repairs and issues that, that we're working through for that. There's been a number of conversations. And what, what we would like to see is that this, that there's been a conversation with, uh, you know, some folks at the county, some folks that, uh, um, with a nonprofit organization, um, that, that does some of the contracts with the county. And, and there's also some donors who have donated funds to help build a new animal shelter in the community. Similar to like McCamey. McCamey would probably be bigger. But we would have essentially what we would like to see, and the county has not signed off on this in any fashion or form. I'm not speaking for them, don't intend to speak for them. But what we would like to do, um, is, is be able to have a facility that takes, um, care of, um, uh, the county and the city with having a third-party professional run and operate the facility so that the county and the city government would get out of sheltering and adopting animals. It's, it's done better from a nonprofit standpoint and, and we would certainly, uh, have that. Now, whether we do this now or whether we come back in a few years from now and we just have to replace our facility. Uh, we thought we had a location for this, um, and we're still working through that. But essentially, to boil it down, there's a good deal of private funds that have been raised to do this. The county currently has a contract to house their animals at a different facility. So they, they already are in a contract to do things. We would like to begin the conversation, and this would be the impetus, to everyone get on the same page and do the right thing for our animals and our community. Does it, does it help us? Yes, because we have, we know that we have future costs in dealing with this. We would still have our animal control, but we would not be in the business of housing animals. We would still have our animal control, but we would not be in the business of housing animals and, and adopting animals, that we would just be doing animal control in this favor.
Any questions for Mr. Fives? All right, seeing none. Other options? You want to save that for a later exciting date?
I'm sure we'll have a lot of conversation on that. But, but I'm happy to answer any questions on anything. I could probably give a three-minute oversight of the agenda, something that we'll also have.
Why don't we do that in, in preparation for that? Mr. Fives, if there's no objection, we will move the reports of city council members to the three o'clock meeting. And that way, after your three-minute synopsis, we'll adjourn for a few moments and begin at three o'clock, as our lawyer has indicated we can do.
So at three o'clock, we'll, we will have a public hearing to hear comments to, to set the property tax rate up to but not exceeding 10 and 1/2 cents. So that, that will come as the, the public hearings. Then items 7A, B, C, D are all items that the council voted on at the last meeting and unanimously voted and moving forward on them. Item E is a bid report for automotive paint and body repairs. Item F is a bid report for street striping and thermoplastics. Instead of having to bid out everything, we have a, we have a provider that gives us costs, and we do that. Item G is surplus property, declaring a 1996 GMC Sierra from the Jetport as surplus property. It does not operate. It has all kinds of fluids leaking out of it. You put more fluids in, they all leak out. It's, it's just time to move on from that, so we will surplus that. Item H is a resolution 2554, is approval of the action plan for the Community Development Block Grant. Any questions on that? Item I is 2555, authorize the mayor to sign a contract amendment for TDEC for the Jim Sharp Park Project. That project is going along fine, a lot of comments on, on Facebook regarding that. Item J, 2556, is the mayor to sign a letter of agreement for additional service for MHM for Cherokee Hotel. Couple meetings ago, Brian Turner was here, and he talked about the, the find that we found the old staircase after we, we there, which will allow us to have more access to the building. We didn't know that it was there, so this just allows our architects to redesign that particular area. So this would be an amendment to that. Item K is authorize the mayor to sign an amendment for WSP for professional services. This is for our MPO services. Item L is authorize the city purchase a salt spreader for the public works through the master's intergovernmental cooperative agreement. The only thing this means is that it won't snow for like six years. But it.
We'll be ready.
But, but we'll be ready. But, but we've, last year, we replaced some plows, and this year, making sure we have salt, salt spreaders available. Appointments to the Beer Board, Don Humes, and LA St. Pierre. And then we have a reappointment of the Airport Authority with Mayor Tom Rowan for a thing. And then at the new business, we have the certified tax rate conversation.
Any comments or questions for the upcoming three o'clock agenda from the council? All right, seeing none, we, we will be moving the reports of council members to the three o'clock meeting. It is 2:52, that gives us an eight-minute recess. We'll be adjourned until three o'clock.